I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Next is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes.
Make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
I'll second.
Been moved to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
Second.
Been moved to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution to correct road vacation, section thirty eighty-nine twenty-two and twenty-nine eighty-nine twenty-two. Do we have anything on that?
Yeah. I talked to Tina. I'm amazed that she even caught it, but she was reading through this resolution and there was... Don't laugh.
You laugh. Everybody read this.
What amazed me even more is that she caught a range issue where they had the wrong range for this person's property that was vacated. So it was a range... Actually township. It was a township eighty-eight and it was supposed to be eighty-nine. How she caught it, I don't know, but she did. So that's what we're doing, is just fixing an error.
So we're basically adopting...
Correcting the... yeah.
Whole new resolution.
Yes. Yep. That's the correction. So I'll make a motion to approve the corrected resolution for road vacation in sections thirty eighty-nine twenty-two and twenty-nine eighty-nine twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion? At it, girl, Tina.
Yeah, really.
Good catch. Hearing any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next is annual urban renewal report. And that's this packet right here.
Yep.
The state started requiring us to do those about three years ago. And it just makes more transparent the use of TIF funds and the debt associated with each. And every entity has to do their own. This is for the county-owned TIFs. And so they're reflected on there. And you just need to approve it. And then when it's approved, I make record of that on the website and then it's published for all to see. And it's a little deceiving because the amount of debt outstanding on there is reported as of July 1 of thirteen. And then it goes through all the payments and things you've made for the fiscal year fourteen to arrive at an end number. But that end number doesn't reflect, then, the changes in the ending debt, the way that you would think. Like, you would think that you could follow it logically.
But it's what the state wants.
It's what... it's how the state wants it in that format. So like, when I do next year's, we'll be starting with the amount of debt outstanding July 1 of fourteen to finish up fifteen. And carbotech will be removed from there because we're done with that one. We ended it, actually, in fiscal year fourteen. But it can't be reflected in there until we start with no debt. More than you needed to know, but...
No, makes sense.
Well, even when they came out with those reports, it made it better, but it's still
Yeah.
an interesting beast when it comes to
Yep.
TIF.
And if you... if you're a member of the public and you want to know about them, the nice thing is when you go to the website, once that's published, there's more information on the website where the urban renewal plan that was adopted originally that allowed these to happen is on there. The maps, any resolutions and ordinances that were passed to make these go into effect. You can go through and chronologically see all the steps were taken. And it's all available, but this is just the yearly financial report that goes with it.
I'll make a motion that way. Approve the annual urban renewal report.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Justin, you want a copy of that?
Sure.
Discussion concerning trail between Tower Rock and city of Steamboat Rock. Wes?
I'm just here to answer what I know about it. A gentleman approached me, Mr. Claude Sears, about... presented a paper to me that was signed by supervisor at that time. I've talked to Jessica and Randy about this both. And basically, he wants the tires cleaned up and he wants a fence put in along the trail on both sides. Is the gist of it.
I'm sure you have more to add, so I'll jump in real quick and just add that in the folders that we have upstairs concerning the bike trail that was put in, this was like 2002, 2003, around in there, there was a county agent that handled the right-of-way acquisitions and it was George Vest Jr. And all of his paperwork that he did to acquire the land and our involvement with the 2080 with Steamboat and the acquisition of this land and easements and things of the such. They... they're all put together in documentation and there's a parcel A... or I mean a parcel one, a parcel two, a parcel three. Then there's no parcel four, and then there's parcel five. And I've checked with Tina and we've researched as good as we can, looking for recorded documents that talk about the property in question as to whether we actually did get an easement on it or not because certain people say one thing, like this Mr. Sears. Wes believes, you know, yet another. I believe yet another. I mean, and so what? We're trying to get to the bottom of easements versus ownership of land, that type of thing. And one of the things that I did is I showed all of the information that I had in our files from the county. I also went and spoke to Mike Smith, who was the attorney for Steamboat at the time that the acquisitions were made. And he had no independent recollection of anything that was a hiccup. He said he just doesn't remember, but certainly that that's his signature on stuff. And then I spoke to Dave Rubo yesterday. And then he is working on researching as best he can because as far as I can find, I can't find an easement for the property that Wes was told that we've had all along, whatnot. And without pieces of the puzzle together, we can't really adequately go forward and make decisions. So anyway, I've asked Dave Rubo to help and he is currently working on that, trying to find this parcel four that's missing and what properties it entails and why it didn't go through or what did or did not happen with it. So that's all I have to offer on it and then whatever Randy has.
Jessica, I'm assuming here that parcel four that you cannot find is the parcel in question that we're dealing with?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. I know I contacted the recorder's office and obtained copies of easements that had something to do with a bike trail during that timeframe. And I know, I think I received four different documents. None of the documents were the property in question. So I don't believe that there's an easement of record here in Hardin County unless it was recorded quite a bit distant from the time when this was being put together, which is a possibility. I mean, perhaps a... an easement was recorded in 2005, 2006, something of that nature, at least the way I looked at it. Because I was just looking at the particular timeframe and location. But I have not seen an easement either. Now, going through the easements, I did find there was nothing in regard to those easements dealing with tire removal or construction of fence, because I think those are the two issues that have been brought to Wes's attention, both continued removal of tires and a new construction of fence. But there is that agreement out there that I believe came before the Board of Supervisors with regard to the removal of tires. Okay? And that would not need to be included in an easement. Now, I'm just going to say a few things in general at this point to kind of highlight for the board some potential things to consider as this may move forward. Number one, we're dealing with an agreement more than ten years old. If that was ever... if this agreement was ever brought into court to be enforced, that could be a defense. I mean, more than ten years on a written contract, that could potentially be a defense. That's just something to re... keep in the back of your mind. As far as I can tell, there is not, at least at this point, there is not anything in regard to construction of a fence. So that is probably a new issue before the board, whether or not the board would want to do that based on the circumstances. It's my understanding that Wes has been getting complaints from the property owner that users of the trail have been venturing off the trail in regard to the surrounding property. And I don't know if there's been any damage done or litter left or what as the actual complaint. But I believe that's the justification that's been brought up by the property owner in regard to this construction of a fence next to the trail. I'm going to ask Jessica, if you could, to give me a copy of whatever you have in regard to that packet. So can have that as well as what I pulled together myself. Have you ever found the 2080?
I do, yeah.
You've got that?
Yep. With Steamboat?
Yes.
Yes, I have that.
That's my understanding is the only 2080 agreement that was involved.
Yep.
But unless Wes wants to add something more, I think this was kind of more of just an informational or to bring the board up to date. As far as... well, I'm going to ask Wes here. Do you think there has been, if you would want to say, a specific issue, a specific request by this property owner that he wants to be brought before the Board of Supervisors or...
I know he's very anxious about the fence because he said he is worried... he said he'd work with us on the tires. But he's more concerned about the fence. If someone comes off the trail and would get hurt... Speaking with his attorney and his insurance man, he said he's fully liable for someone that would go off the trail. And he's caught people off of there on his property, hunting and walking or hiking or accessing the river. So he's very concerned with someone getting hurt, turning around and suing him over an incident like that happening. As far as the tires, there have been a lot of tires removed over the years. You know, we did that river cleanup two, three years ago. They took a lot of tires off there for that river cleanup. I have made some contacts about... I talked to Shelley Codner with the landfill. She works for the landfill and she's kind of their creative person to get rid of waste and things like that. And she's trying to work with me and if we would have an issue with the tires come up, how we could dispose those without costing a lot of money. So I researched that a little bit. But I think the fence is, like Randy said, is a new issue and I think it's something maybe his attorney or insurance person has alerted into. He does have it posted every twenty feet on both sides of the trail as you're going down through there. That's, you know, private property. That's all I can really add.
And Randy, you brought a letter today that the property owner couldn't be here in person, so it's in the letter. And Tim Mary is the request for the fence and the removal of tires.
Wes, is this on the second? When you come down Tower Rock and you go by, there's a fence right there that has livestock.
No, this is farther down.
And then you go... you kind of go past the parks and stuff and then you start down the next hill.
When you go down that next hill and you cross that little bridge, that bridge that goes over that little stream, as soon as you cross that bridge and that leg of the trail, his property is on both sides.
His property is on both sides there. Okay.
And the reason the tires are there is it used to be
Go-kart or something, they were saying?
Yeah, I wondered that because I've biked there quite a bit and I always wondered what... I didn't know, you know, I owned that property. You don't know how many feet that is, right off the top of your head?
I don't. I
Can't remember either.
I would just... we just finished with a fence contractor down at the Bates Trail. I was going to have him walk it with me and just give me a rough estimate of how long it was.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be good information to know how.
He's going to try meeting with me here this next week.
Okay.
So you charge by the foot? What's he do?
For the fencing?
Yep. What kind of fence?
Like down there, we just put a five strand barbed wire. We can put some wood too. Whatever you want. He'll do whatever you want. We did one wood and then two steel and one wood in there.
I don't think there's a fence that you can put up that's going to keep people out, but at least it determines a boundary of where they've crossed.
Did I tell you anymore?
I was reading this, so I didn't hear if it came up while I was reading this. Again, I mean, one thing to consider, we are dealing with a, I believe, a new issue. There isn't any contract or agreement in regard to this. I believe that would be a boundary line between basically an easement and a property. I mean, you're... technically, the county would not own that property, just have the right to use. But I believe based upon that, on a, you know, on a construction, a new fence there, just in general, that would be an expense that would be divided. It would not be something that would be solely upon the county. But it should be something that would be divided between potentially the county and the other property owner.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there anything else? Any other questions or anything? There's no action to be taken on this.
What's our next step then?
Basically, repeat what you just told us. He wanted a response on that with that letter.
That we're willing to put up a fence and go and have these with him or what are we thinking here or...
Well, does it... I don't know that much, but like, does it matter that we can't produce a recorded easement yet? I mean, should we find out if there actually is one?
That wouldn't hurt.
Okay, and that's what I think I have Dave working on. I mean, that's what I've asked him to do. Because I know, I would have never thought there was an easement because I can't find it and Wes assures me that there was one. Now, I found some for other properties that were temporary easements, not permanent forever. So I guess I don't know what we're dealing with yet, so that's why I asked Dave to do it for me.
The reason I'm sure there's one because they surely would have built a trail
On another person's
across our paperwork complies.
Yeah.
Says right there we did, though.
There's a...
I know.
Well, yeah, there's that PS here right there in this letter. The contractor who put in the trail did not put it in where Jim, and I'm assuming Jim was a prior?
Jim Sears.
Prior owner. Where Jim asked him, and Jim did not sign his paperwork until it was done right. This also is in limbo. So maybe that does, I mean, explain. Maybe that, if there is an easement out there, maybe it was not signed and recorded until a good time later than the others.
Guess we'll have to keep digging to see what we find. Wes to answer. It wouldn't hurt to me with him and...
I invited him this morning, but he just started a new job at United Supplyers, so. That's why he drafted the letter, I think.
Okay. Yeah, we need to find that parcel.
Well, I think we know which blocks they are. It's just that we can't figure out why it wasn't done at the same time as the others, which I'm sure it was what he referenced in this letter. And then there's no easement recorded with it. So I guess that, to me, is a hiccup and a sticking point that we need to figure out before we make decisions.
So how long will you need to decide? How long do we need to wait before we decide if we're going to find it or if it exists?
Well, before Dave, I'm sure he'll figure it out in a couple days.
Okay. So if we bring it back up in a week or two weeks?
We'll have a
Better
I should have a fencing estimate for that.
Okay.
So we'll bring it back to the agenda in two weeks?
Two or one?
I don't care. Two's safe, one's there.
Yeah, but if you go one and we have the information, you can act on it or you can just
Table it.
Yeah. It's up to you. I don't care.
Put it back on next week's agenda.
Yeah, agree with that.
That's all we got to do, isn't it? Next. It's application for use of courthouse grounds. And this comes from the city of Eldora. And they want to do a Santa Claus on December thirteenth between 10:30 a.m. and 1 o'clock in the rotunda. Giving out Santa sacks to the kids.
You've checked with Jody on this?
Yes. Jody's fine with whatever we wanted to do as far as cleaning, being here, opening it. Some of that part was restricting just the use of the doors. But if it was handicap accessible, he said he could be here to help people up for the handicap side and through the elevator. And then he'd do the cleanup afterwards.
Sir, do you need anything else added on to this rather than just approval of the application?
I don't think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the use of courthouse grounds for December thirteenth.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Eldora for bringing it back to Eldora again. And I'd like to thank Jody for stepping up and coming in to do this, to help out with it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ineligibly homestead military credits to be disallowed for 2014-15.
I have two different ones?
Yep. One's for 2014 payable 15-16 and 2015 payable 16-17.
I'll make a motion to approve the one for 2014 payable 2015-2016 as printed on our paper before us.
I can both or do you want me to do this next one?
I was going to do it separate, so you would need a second.
Oh, second, sorry.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't even want to fight over this one?
No, you got it.
Also do the next one. Make a motion to approve the 2015 payable 2016-2017 as printed on our paper.
I'll second that one.
Okay.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the family farm credits, 2014 new family farm credit applications. The list of two pages.
Two pages.
I'll make a motion to approve the family farm credits for 2014.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the Recorder Solutions Project status far.
When I entered office in 2007, we had solutions for our software and we... for imaging, which is what is put online or for others to view on our public terminal, was with ImageTech and it's especially known as Paperclip. Over the years, I've... I made the decision that I wanted to go to All Solutions. I spoke with several recorders who had done so and they just said it was a smoother process, better customer service and things like that. So I originally started this about two years ago, looking into this and the different pieces of equipment and stuff. Our scanners, some of the equipment is twelve years old, ten and twelve years old. And some might be even older than that, but that's all I could find the information on. So it's time to replace a lot of it. We've had, especially in the last part of the year, we've had increasing problems with different pieces of it. So I contacted Solutions and we came up with a plan and I signed an agreement, a contract, I believe around the first of October this year. And I'm going to use my Recorder's Management Fund to pay for it. And it wasn't until yesterday when James came and I had heard that the project had been put on hold at your request. And I guess I don't understand why. I asked Allison and Max, this is Allison Herman and Max Alec, of Solutions to come because they can explain more the technical details of it and how it would work and why it would be better. I think it would be meshed much better with... well, Jessica's office is already using All Solutions. Is Sussar's office, it would make their jobs easier too. It would just beat everything up. And then moving forward and re-entering with Iwilland Records, I think it would make it much easier too. That was kind of the end game in my mind. So I've asked them to come and answer any questions about certain things and, you know, I'm open to questions, so.
Do you guys have any questions?
When did... we talked probably about October 1st or somewhere around there, maybe even September. And you were saying that you were going to do this and it sounded like it was going to be done like sooner than later.
Well, I was trying to do it by the end of the year was my goal.
Oh, okay.
To get everything up and running, so.
One of the questions I have is with talking to James, he said that the technology of it actually puts us into a backwards motion. If you want to go ahead and explain it clearer than I explained it.
It... yeah. I can only speak to the technological part of it and Solutions does an amazing job of what they do. But a lot of what we've done has been to go to virtualization and redundancy and SQL-based products and, you know, backwards might not be the best terminology for it. It would certainly be off of the standardization that we've set, you know, as a direction moving forward. Like Barb said, the auditor's office has used it. Procedurally, it may be a massive step forward. Technologically, it's not something I'm terribly interested in, but I'm more than willing to work with it and support it. But I'd prefer to do that based on discussions with, you know, the people using the product. I did talk with Lori, obviously. She's not the county recorder. I'm completely aware of that. She said she wasn't able to make it today, but she had requested that we also put the project on hold just because making a change like this so many days before she takes office, she'd prefer to make those decisions for herself once she sees boots on the ground and sees pros and cons of both sides. My apologies for not being able to project more a little bit if you're hard to hear me up front.
Another question I had was on it that they were going to train in December on this. They were coming in to train either this
Training was supposed to start Monday.
Monday.
This past Monday, yeah.
So we're going to train. I know two of you, Renee's coming to this seat and Lori's taking your seat.
Renee won't probably be training on it, but Jane and I would be with the end result. Again, being Jane being well-versed and then
And that was a concern.
Subway into the new term.
That was a concern that we trained people in it. You, I was assuming Renee and yourself would both be leaving. And then we go into the new year and we'd have to hire to retrain again on this again. I know Jane would be there.
Yeah. Not retrain... I wouldn't say retrain, but she would already...
But Lori would have to be trained on it.
The majority of what we do is on Solutions anyway. It's not a... It's an updating plus, changing the imaging system, basically.
Okay. These are some of my concerns. Does anybody else have any?
Can I ask a question of Allison for a second? Not to put her on the spot, but if her office upgraded to this, does that include the ability to use that workflow or whatever that used to be talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I also address the training issue because
Can I also address the training issue, because with new recorders or new officers at any time, we always come in and do, come in to visit for a day, and do any training they need on software, on scanning, on whatever. So, either myself or Doug would be down for a day in January, generally we call them up, and if she would need to use it. In all honesty, training takes about two hours, two to four hours, depending on who you are, but, so. So I don't really think that, there wouldn't be a second charge for more training, because it would be part of what we, you got new auditor visit, didn't you?
I don't think so, because I already use the software.
Oh, okay. But typically, we come in for a day, and we sit down and make sure they know how to use the software, and answer any questions they have, and that's something we ought to do, so it's no charge to the county, so.
Maybe it's a good time, though, to get on record why I asked about workflow, is because my understanding is, the document that starts in her office, if it went into the scanning, this workflow, then the Assessor's Office and the Auditor's Office could independently pull it up while the other is working on it, and we don't have to wait for a piece of paper to go from office to office to office, right?
Correct. It's automated, that you can set what type of documents you want, so you can have all the deeds, or all the groundwater surveys, go to certain offices. We have counties that like the, like the death records go to VA's office automatically, for them to pull up and build a view and work those documents, so without paper passing hands, yes.
And I have one more question, only because I was aware, made aware of it. Is there some licensing or something that ties into what Michelle does in her office that is dependent upon, oh, you probably wouldn't know this. Who would know it? James? Is there something with her scanning in her office that's dependent upon the license that the Recorder's Office has with Image Tech?
There shouldn't be, no. We have a bad, you know, we have a good record licensing, but...
But they can break apart, and she can still sustain what she's doing?
Oh, we're expanding the Image Tech product anyways to the jail and a number of other systems, so even if they don't use it, we, you know, we're expanding Image Tech elsewhere.
But I guess what I'm asking, just to make certain that everybody in the room knows what we're talking about, is if the Recorder's Office did this, and it works well with the Assessor and the Auditor, the Recorder, it doesn't leave the Treasurer's Office out, hanging out there in limbo, does it?
It shouldn't, no. Because they don't scan anything into Solutions. They do to, more like the DOT, for your harvest or stuff, don't you?
Right, just DOT.
So I think it should be, should be completely separate for that estimate.
Thank you very much.
What's the cost of the upgrade?
Estimated about, I'm gonna high estimate it, about $14,000, $14,000, $15,000, so. And like I said, hopefully that, I don't know, sometimes when you get into some of the equipment, that's, I think, a pretty fair estimate. It's just like anything else in Old House or anything else, once you get into it, you might have a few additions here and there, but...
My other question is, can you enter into a contract without bringing it across the board? That's kind of a question for Randy.
I haven't seen the contract.
I haven't either.
Yeah, in regard to, one question, one big question, why I say that, is in regard to who it binds, who is the contract between. I mean, that would be a nice easy question if it was, well, no, it wouldn't be a nice easy question, if it was between the county, and if the county as a whole was bound by this agreement, otherwise being known as on the hook for payment, then it's definitely a different question than if the contract is just with the Harden County Recorder. Now, even if it was a county as a whole, there'd be a question of agency, as to whether the elected official could hold themselves out as having the authority to enter into the contract. And then you're looking at it through the eyes of the other party. And so let's put it this way, there could be a possibility there under an agency theory, but the main thing is, I would have to see the contract itself, as to who are the named parties.
Well, could you speak to what you've done in other counties, as far as? The agreement is between the Recorder's Office and Solutions, correct?
So you're the elected official. In our estimation, if you sign a contract with us, you sign a contract with us, it covers the county. That's who we're doing business with you. It's your office that we're doing business with in the past for 28 years, but you spoke for the board. It's your funds, you said yes, our company's going to use this. So we're actually making an agreement, I believe, with the specific office, but it's actually affects the entire county.
I guess what's the downside of waiting 45 days, and then signing, having that new recorder sign a contract?
Well, we were set up to do, I mean, I've been working on this since way before the election, or before the primary even, or anything, so this was our, we had to postpone it twice, so if I'd had my way, it would've been last spring, but it didn't happen that way, so, you know. We already have the equipment in our office, some of it, so, but like I said, we were ready to go on Monday.
And that was my original question, because I knew we had talked about this a lot earlier, so I was wondering why. So now I found out that it's been postponed a couple of times, but you're correct in saying that you were trying to get this done early.
And Allison has been very gracious, because it'd be like, I'll come this day, well, hey, that will work, so we kind of went back and forth a little bit with that, and I had James read through the contract before I signed it and sent it off, and I feel like it covered my faces. Like I said, they can answer the more technical ones, but, and from what I understand, Lori is at Iowa Land Records training, right?
Today, yeah.
So, that's gonna do nothing but make it smoother for, or enhance it, so.
I guess the problem I have is I have RIT Director saying, let's wait and take a better look, and we have the new recorder coming in saying, let's wait, take a better look, and if there's not a contract or something that's gonna trip and cost the county a lot of money, I don't see a harm in waiting 45 days to let the new set of people take a look at it and come up with that. I guess I'm not seeing the rush to spend $14,000. Needed or not needed, I think Lori should be in on it to give her opinion and see what direction she would like to go.
Well, I think, you know, with all due respect, I'm a recorder until January 2nd.
Why are you saying that?
You can second guess, you know, every office, every elective office. You can't, I mean...
You're the recorder. If you wanna go spend $14,000 on this new system, I don't know any way that, what we can do about it. I just think it makes sense to work with people, and work with a new recorder, and work with IT, and have them on...
Well, I will not work with her.
I'm just saying, having them on board, because right now, they're not on board. What I'm hearing, they're not on board. Wouldn't it make sense, if James said, yeah, this is great, and Lori said, yep, we should do this, we should do it, but right now, I'm getting, James is saying, let's wait, Lori is saying, let's wait, so what, if you're sitting in my chair, what are you gonna say, you know? This is a great deal?
James would prefer probably I not go with Solutions at all. He's a fan of Image Tech and what he's set up. I'm a fan, and because of all the experiences I've talked about with other recorders, that's what I chose to do. So, and they can speak to any other concerns as far as...
I'm not bashing, I'm not bashing either company. I don't, couldn't tell you which company, as it flows out from here, but I'm just saying that there's resistance of, and I know we call it resistance, of just people wanting to look at it, that are going to be here. Why not let them have the control to set this up?
Because that's not the way the system's set up.
I guess I don't understand.
I've been looking at, well, what if I would've put this in in spring, would you have them come in and withdraw it? I mean, that...
You could've done that.
You can if it to death.
Absolutely, could've done that. But now you're 45 days from going out, now you wanna come in and spend $14,000, so...
No, I wanted to spend $14,000 a while ago. It's just the way the...
Back, back to my question, after the answer is, does this have to be board approved to go into that agreement, from their answer? We need to see a contract in order to know this?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
I, I need to see a contract before I can give a more definitive answer.
All right.
According to Iowa code, I do not. This is, we collect $1 for each document. That's what this fund, how this fund is established, since the late 90s, 1990s. And, basically, the fund is set up, the money is turned over to the Treasurer's Office, and I need to spend money, or when the recorder needs to spend money from that, I alert Michelle so that she can track and balance where she needs to, and I submit a claim. Board approval's not needed.
I guess I'm going to ask a question. Does somebody here in this room have a copy of that contract?
We don't, no.
James read through it, I don't know, but you probably got the full recall, yeah.
Because my, my answer would be, if that contract is, if that contract is made with the Harden County Recorder, if it's made between Solutions and the Harden County Recorder, I am going to say, no, you do not need to approve it. And basically, the situation is, and I'm just going to speak my opinion here, again, we're dealing with the, if you would wanna say, the difference in powers of the Board of Supervisors as an entity, as an overseeing entity, and the individual elected officials. Now, you do have the power of the purse. I mean, you have the power of the budget. You have the ability to approve that budget, and there are also some specific areas where you do have statutorily the power of approval, but you do not have the power to micromanage these respective departments. That's within the authority of the elected official. Now, if that agreement is with the Harden County Recorder, that is going to be a binding agreement regardless of your approval or not. If you do not approve of such sayings, your recourse, your recourse is in regard to the budget of the Recorder's Office. Now, you know as well as I know, you can't do anything right now in regard to that, with respect to it, but when that budget comes up again, that would be a time at which you could take actions with regarding that budget, such as you could specifically say, we do not believe this is necessary, that item of the budget's not gonna be approved, the budget's going to be reduced. And you enter into the next question, as to whether the elected official can go ahead and rearrange their budget, once you have approved it, and shift it around in regard to rob Peter to pay Paul. The thing is, I think we have a little bit different question as to whether that contract is between Solutions and Harden County, Iowa, as a whole. Again, I mentioned the potential of agency entering in there, with a recorder being basically an elected official, and a third party may be seeing them as an agent of the county as a whole. And that's kind of where we're, where I am sitting at right now, in regard to my opinion of this contract with, out having seen it yet.
Renee just went up to see if she can find it upstairs.
Oh, okay.
That's my big question, so. Otherwise, I think we need to go through the proper procedures.
Now, otherwise, and I might be somewhat overstepping my bounds here, I mean, you definitely can express as Board of Supervisors your disapproval. That would probably be as far, I think, as you could go, if that contract is with the, I mean, with the recorder. I would ask you not to put the auditor in the position of saying, any type of instruction of, don't issue a warrant for the payment of this. I think you might've overstepped your bounds if you do so, but that would basically just be bringing in an added, you know, conflict, and an added, basically, issue, that I don't believe would be, would be necessary. But even if, you know, the contract is recorded, or excuse me, with the recorder, I think you as a board have, you know, the right to express your opinion, even though, you know, it would not be binding on the recorder's actions. The agreement is with Harden County as a whole. I would say proper procedure would be that it would be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Now, Barb has signed this. Barb has signed this on behalf of Harden County, as recorder of Harden County. And I, as I have been saying here, I'll say again, I believe the enforceability of this agreement would be based upon, basically, the doctrine of agency. Now, again, there's a lot of factors that would go into that. That would be a question, I don't think my opinion would be binding in regard to a matter as to whether the people who negotiated with Barb from Solutions believe that she had the authority to bind Harden County as an agent. There would be factors with regard to that, past dealings, et cetera. Most likely, that would be if the parties pushed it. That would be a matter that would be determined in a court of law. I would, at this point, since I've said what I said, I would suggest to the representatives of Solution that they might want to, you know, contact their legal counsel as to opinions in regard to the binding nature of this agreement. To be totally clear, without having that issue of agency, I would say that the agreement, since it is between Solutions and Harden County as customer, that it should be approved by the Board of Supervisors in order to be binding.
That's contrary to what my research told me. I have several Attorney General's opinions, and it says the, it's to allow the recorder's flexibility to expend the funds for the specific purposes listed in the bill, while still maintaining accountability. It said, we'll go through the normal claims approval process, except the Board of Supervisors cannot disallow a claim unless they believe it to be illegal or over budget, which it is neither.
Barb, don't get me wrong, in regard to my opinion, if this agreement was redone between Solutions and the Harden County Recorder, as opposed to Harden County in general, I would have no question in regard to it being a binding agreement. Okay? The only thing that I am talking about is that the party stated in this agreement is Harden County, period.
Jessica, how was that handled? Oh, Renee. It was before you started, right, the agreement?
When they switched from Image Tech, I wasn't here. I came after.
Did you sign an agreement?
I don't know. I would have to look back.
I would say the rule of thumb that we've worked in the last 28 years is this is the methodology that we use.
Yeah, that's what I was told too.
We're working directly with the individual recorder or department head, you know, instead of the Board of Supervisors, which meets once or twice a month, or however many times it is. We're in much closer contact with the actual department head. So, more than likely, we've done this in this fashion for 28 years. If it's not correct, I guess we'd like to know that too, and we will definitely take it up with counsel.
So Randy, she's signed the contract, but she doesn't have board approval, so where does that leave us, voting one way or the other? I mean, she's got her name on a contract to Harden County, so where, where does that leave us?
Where does that leave?
Yeah, in your opinion.
Okay. The board can take one of two actions, well, one would be an action, one would be an action. The board could approve this agreement, okay? That would be one. The board could not approve this agreement. The board could not approve this agreement, that would be the inaction. There's a number of other actions that could take place, I mean, what I've mentioned, if the board is not inclined to approve this agreement, the board could not prevent Solutions entering into an agreement with the Harden County Recorder. An agreement signed by Barb Nuss. Basically, the situation is... I mean, it's a little, I mean, it's a little tricky right now in regard to payment under this agreement without board approval. If there is going to be the binding agreement in regard to it for going forward, I would say there either needs to be board approval of this, or there would need to be a new agreement entered into by Solutions, just specifically with the Harden County Recorder.
Wouldn't the correct way then to handle this, if you're gonna enter into a contract as an elected official, would be to, and it said Harden County at the top, should have been brought to the board first, and then we approved it, that she could go ahead and have her blessing on it, or is she doing it the correct way?
If it's going to be an agreement with Harden County, yes, that would be. I have contracts in my own department with a Harden County attorney, in the Harden County Attorney's Office, with respect to that. Now, it comes out of my budget, that's approved by you, but you don't see this. You might get, uh, we may have discussion with those when it becomes budget time. But the situation is, that contract is between, basically, myself as a Harden County attorney, which is backed up by the budget of the Harden County attorney, not backed up by the budget of Harden County as a whole. But if it's with Harden County, I mean, as a whole, yes, I mean, that, that agreement should come before the board of supervisors.
I, not related to this, but sort of, I've spoken with Beth from our auditing firm about this, because this is something that I didn't really have experience in beforehand, and my understanding is, one of the things that she looks for is whether department heads entered into contracts or leases, and whether or not that had proper board approval, and then us having the authority to sign them. So, if I brought you a contract and said, I'd like to enter into this contract on behalf of Harden County, you can give me your blessing and approve it, then I can sign it, and I have authority to sign it when you give your blessing to it. And I think that's what we're discussing, is whether this is a Harden County contract that, you know, Beth is gonna look at, or whether this is just a contract with the recorder's office. And I would only say that, you know, what's done is done, but if you don't approve this formally, that because it is already a signed contract, it will be something that she finds in her audit, and we will have a note in the audit about it. So, that's just my two cents on what I know from speaking with her.
And the note will be in there because it wasn't followed through the right channels.
Right.
Right?
It very well could be noted already, even if you approve it after the fact, if she wants to get picky enough to say it was done this date, and then you approved it here. I doubt that she would go that particular, but I do know that she would need to find board approval to back up the contract, because it is Harden County.
Or they have to rewrite the contract.
Well, I'm just telling you what I know from her.
We'll have an action item today on this. Renee?
Just making a comment, this is just something that nobody's really brought up. The Recorder's Management Fund is something that only Barb can spend out of, and she does not need board approval to spend out of that. And I totally understand the situation with the contract, and that might be an issue. If it's something that they could redo the contract with the recorder, then they, I would think they might not need board approval, because she has sole authority to spend those funds in, in the future. And also, as one note, they weren't budgeted to expend, it was only like three thousand dollars, so the budget would have to be amended, but it's not an increase in taxes, it's not any property tax dollars being used, it's a user fee on recorded documents that only the recorder can use for document management and preservation and that type of thing, so, you know, a budget amendment would need to be done. But, you know, it's not an increase in taxes, or, or affecting the general fund or any of the other funds by any means.
So the question is...
The budget amendment actually can be looked at two different ways. If I had known this specific amount when I created this budget, I could have built that in. That being said, the money that I have in this account is mine to spend, like Renee said, doesn't affect the bottom line per se. I'm not spending it out, there's plenty of money there, which I think you'll attest to, and, uh, I had budgeted, each year I budgeted three thousand dollars, and I know we discussed this at the budget meeting I had with you guys. And that was mainly for maintenance of a program, because once we enter into Iowa Land Records, maintenance fees kick in with Solutions and any other providers. So, if I were to have to amend my budget by the same token, I feel I'd have to include that entire amount in my budget. And I think that's very misleading to everybody.
The, the big question I got here is, do we put it on the agenda for next week for us to approve, or do they rewrite the contract?
I don't know that approval, what I'm saying is, I'm not sure approval is required.
I, I know the approval needs to be made from what our attorney's saying, or you could have the contract rewritten, so it's just binding you and not the county of Harden, it binds the recorder's office.
Thank you.
According to what I'm hearing from Randy, right now, the procedure's done wrong, it did come to us first.
I'm, I'm not required to.
It's, the contract is with Harden County, just like Lance has said, if the contract is with you, you're fine, but the contract's with Harden County, so being that name is on there, that's, that's what's...
I'm following suit, from what I was told, I did lots of research on this, other counties have not had to go through this process.
I just want to know which way we want to do it. Do you want to have a new contract, is that a problem with you guys writing a new contract with a recorder?
I'd have to take it up with legal counsel. I don't foresee it being a problem at this point, but I'm not a lawyer.
How long do you think that'll take?
Two days.
Two days?
Probably have it up by Friday.
Or to put it on next week's agenda for us? To, to give you, to authorize you to sign that on behalf of the county? That's where we're at.
I, I would just re, I would just reword that a little bit, Lance. If the contract is between Solutions and the Harden County Recorder, okay, I don't believe you have to authorize...
Right.
Her to sign that. I believe that's within her own authority.
Right.
But if it remains with Harden County, then I believe you have to approve this contract, this agreement, and I believe you could probably approve this existing agreement, and grant authority or your approval that Barb signed on behalf of the county.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just gotta know whether to put that on next week's agenda, or have a new, or she can do it on her own, and this is withdrawn?
I, I would just suggest you put it on next week's agenda, and if a, a new contract is entered into specifically with the Harden County Recorder, then you do not have to take any further action.
Okay.
Okay, so, so if it's between, if we have it redone? Do they have to prove it, or they don't have to prove it?
No.
Okay, thank you. It's getting a little fuzzy there, so.
I'll just go on record, I think it's crazy that you want to spend fourteen thousand dollars before you leave, when the new recorder would like to put it on hold, and our IT department would like to put it on hold. I think those are two credible people in my book that I would want to watch, and has nothing to do with the company at all, maybe, you know, maybe exactly what they do when they get into the January, and that's great, but in my book, that's, and then when you talk budget amendments, and I understand all that, but I don't see the rush, I really don't, so, I guess I, I can tell you. Yeah. I'm good.
Anything wrong?
Just an uneasy spot to be in right now, because I know that you were trying to get this done, if you would have got it done four or five months ago, we wouldn't be here, yeah.
It'd still be the same question if they did it the same way, whether who has to sign it?
Well, I guess, I don't know.
Which is...
I, I did my research, honestly, and talked to all these counties and stuff, and...
But that was part of the reason it was told to be put on hold, because I didn't, couldn't honestly tell you if it was a legal contract that you signed or not, and obviously, according to what I'm hearing, it's not, so it could either be rewritten, or you can bring it back to us next week, and we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, so what happens, when can this happen then? When can they actually start bringing everything in and connecting and all that?
After, for a bit, or after they rewrote the contract? Is that, is that fair to say, Randy?
Yeah.
Depending on how much you'll have to get from us with existing product for conversion, we'll also have to mesh with the IT schedule, which is at least three weeks out. Admin rights and things like that, we're just a little slammed with the new time and attendance program, and the financing collections position software, a number of other projects, where at least three weeks before we can start doing anything, if we're required for anything.
Well, James, I don't think that's fair, because you've known about this for quite some time, and to now, at this point, be shoved back, I don't think is, you know, I don't know what it all takes, from a technical standpoint, from James, what do you need from James in order to...
Minimal.
Complete it?
Minimal.
What needs to be done? Without being too technical?
Well, without being technical, we, we need to load scanning software on your PCs, and whether our tech guys can do that, or they can do it?
You have to get off of that on forty now.
You know, we would need a, because the plan was, we were going to, to install USC DAXI for a while, be running both, both Image Tech and ours, and we would do the conversion, so in order to do the conversion, I would actually need a copy of the Image Tech's database or something, basically, to play with, and then once we do the conversion, we would need that, we would need access to that, so. With other counties, we actually have a VPN or RDB connection, so that I can get on and test stuff, which we would need that set up at some point in time too, but that'd be when we actually ready to do the conversion, so that would be either three or four weeks out.
Weren't there a number of updates that we don't have?
Yeah.
Yeah, James had mentioned having to do an update too, is that effective?
Well, we also need to update the AS100 up to version seven point one, but that is not contingent on this project, they're two separate issues, so.
So that doesn't enter into...
No, because Jessica's running just fine now, the auditor's office at the current version, and it's supported, so. And when you did the system update, it would automatically update whatever needed to be updated on the imaging side of it also, so that would not even add any extra to it, we already have it, so.
Max, when you say minimal, about how much?
When Allison comes in to actually sit down into your computer system to actually do some things, she has to have administrative authority, or have James log in as administrator, so she can install the programs.
Okay.
And of course, we'll have to have our staff there to get trained up on installation for when new machines come in, things like that, there's always time you have to dedicate, so.
Well, then why can't we just have their techs do it, they offer that?
Yeah, I mean, we do that in...
All they need is a permission, so, I mean, to get onto the AS400, and then their technicians can do it, and that's figured into that fourteen, fifteen thousand dollar figure.
I'd still talk to IT on that answer, I don't, I can't answer that.
Well, we work with them on installing Jessica's and Mindy, so they already have the installations, we've worked with the IT coordinator, James and I worked on that before, so.
Well, again, we'll have it on next week's agenda unless you guys enter a new contract prior to that.
Okay.
And thank you, everybody, at least we have it cleared up. Next is utility permits and Secretary Rose's department.
Should be one utility permit.
Permit number eleven dash eighteen dash fourteen. It's like Interstate Power and Light Company, motion to approve that permit.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Question carry is other business. Harry, none, ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye, we're adjourned.